Okay, I think it just went live to my personal account.
Do you?
Yeah.
Jeff, could you click record on your computer, please? It's not letting us record. It's telling us to ask permission.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's.
This, the screen looked different and it just asked it, I want to go live and it did not prompt me to switch to the city account. It's just live off my account. So.
Okay, if you could click record, that'd be great.
Okay, I guess we could just share to the city's account from my account or. We stand by one minute.
You don't want that in perpetuity on your personal account?
No. I mean, well, it's my work account.
Oh, it did that to me last week and then it came back with a prompt and said, what page do you want to share this on?
Oh, it did.
Yeah, after I prompt, after I. Went live, got almost way all the way through the process.
Okay, we are recording. I'll look out for a place to. Share further to the city's account. Here we go. Okay, we're thoroughly live on our channels.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, we're going to call the April 27, 2021 City of Gallatin Council Committee meeting to order. At this time, I'm going to read the Governor Lee's executive order pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders. And the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the April 27, 2021 Gallatin Council Committee meeting. Will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. You can join the Zoom meeting at https://us02web.zoom.us/j/85848106643. Then dial 1-470-250-9358 or 1-470-312552 and enter webinar ID 85848106643.
Most approved.
And at this time, I'll take a motion to approve that and we'll do roll call at the same time.
Most approved.
Okay. Okay. We're shining.
I'm coming. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Alexander.
Present here.
Councilman Fan.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Overton.
Yes, and present.
Six, I mean, seven I's, zero N's, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the April 13, 2021 Council Committee meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll have public recognition for anybody in the public that wants to speak tonight. If you name an address for the record. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
We have Pascal Givance, who's raised his hand. Go ahead.
Pascal Givance, 1335 Longwood Park. Jeff, it looks like it's not live on Facebook. Let's just say, get attention, city work, but there is no video, nothing. If you could look into that, that would be great.
Thank you. Yes, we're working on that. Facebook looked a little different than normal.
All right, good evening, all. First, I want to, again, Chief Bandy, thanks for with you. I was at Square Fest all day this weekend. Unfortunately, with the weather, that was not as good as that could have been, but still people show up, it's great. And I was just near the GPD booth and I was able to observe all day long. How the officers were interacting with the public and the kids and everybody around and they did a super job. These guys were really great of what they were doing, so I just wanted to mention. And, you know, I come from military, so the way the guys act reflects on their leadership, so, Chief, I'm sure you're doing a great job with that. Now, I want to talk about the CARE Act money. The government gave money to the state, the state gave money to local. And we, the city received a chunk of money, was initially around 600K. Remember, 600,000, little more. I get bored sometimes, so I like to keep myself educated with what's going on, so I looked into the CARES Act and I looked into the CARES Act even more. After a couple of meetings ago. The mayor asked the council what they wanted to do regarding the meetings. And the new IT. Who got installed in the meeting, so I know we spent $90,000 with this IT, who's actually authorized by the CARE Act. Computer and IT costs necessary to facilitate the day work for public employees, so it's kind of gray area, but it's okay. But there's a couple of things there who kind of bother me when the council decided not to use that. That there is a little line somewhere in the CARES Act who said that. Equipment moves by need to be used for the purpose of what that got bought for. So if I remember well, on the record, Mayor Brown explained really clearly why we were buying this equipment and what was the goal, and the goal was. So people who can't assisting person, the meetings. Would be able to follow on social media and call, on social media and Zoom and calling. Who can sound fair, because some people can't come in. Or some people don't want, still because of COVID. The COVID still, even if the governor decided, you know, today to reopen everything, some people are still scared of COVID, so that's kind of. You're right, and they should be able to follow what's going on and answer questions. Another staff who kind of bothered me somewhere that it's saying too, that local governments will need to follow their applicable local purchasing laws and policies. A lot of things got bought with that money, but maybe I missed it, but I think I spent a lot of time watching what's going on. I never seen any requests coming in from the council to spend that money, so I kind of wonder. You know, it's black and white there, so if there was a waiver I missed or something, but, you know, again, I think. We, we should follow, but hopefully. I hope to still use all this equipment next week when we come in large, the 4th of May was great. We're going to finally go see you in person again, and. Hopefully, you, you will use that equipment, because there is on the little space who say that that need to be used for what bought for, say too, that. If it's not used for what's bought for, the money has to be reimbursed to the state. So that would be bad to have to spend $90,000 on equipment and have to send that money back to the state, so. Think about that for next week and we'll see you all. Have a great day. Thank you.
Renee Saunders, go ahead.
This is Renee Saunders, 2092 Rodman Boulevard, Gallatin. I hope I don't lose you. I'm traveling right now. I wanted to ask, well, first, I wanted to say thank you very much for all the work you do. Congratulations on getting to the point where you all can have in-person meetings. And the, one of the highlights of these last several months has been my ability to participate in the meetings and to hear what you all are doing for our beautiful city. Unfortunately, I have work obligations that are going to prevent me from being in person, and I do not participate in social media. So I was wondering if there was going to continue to be a Zoom link so that I could at least feel as though I was invested in what the city council is doing. Again, thank you very much, and that's.
And let's see, I'm just waiting to see if there's anyone else who would like to speak. Please use the raise your hand function if you do. I recognize most of the other names here. And it looks like that's it for public comment.
Thank you, Jeff. And this time, we'll have the mayor's comments.
Thank you.
Mayor's comment.
No comments. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to say apologies for the weather, but certainly thanks to the downtown Gallatin organization for their efforts this past Saturday. It was Square Fest. A lot of work goes into that by that organization, by that board, certainly by the volunteers, by the vendors. Great job. Sorry that the weather pretty much shot your day. And also thanks to the people who came out and tried to support the vendors that were set up. I thought there were a fair number of people on the square trying to be a part of the Square Fest. And it's an important event for our city, and hopefully we'll have better weather come the fall for the Main Street Festival. Also, I want to say in reference to Dr. Saunders' question, understand that the meeting will still be on our website. And it will also be streaming on Comcast, which is Comcast Channel 19, if you have the opportunity to watch it there. So you'll actually be able to go to our website and watch it there, too. We will not, unless this council changes its mind, have the opportunity for the public to interact from outside of the building. But you would be able to at least keep up with what's going on. You can always email me your comments, too. And then finally, I want to wish our city engineer Nick Tuttle a very happy, important birthday this Friday. I think it's Friday, but yeah, it's, it's the 30th, so. Happy birthday to Nick, and that concludes my comments. Councilman Hayes.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we'll go to the agenda, which is item number one, ordinance number 02104-27. Richard DePrist.
Thank you, Councilman. This is an ordinance appropriating $500 donation from Rogers Group to Gallatin Beautiful. It'll be for supplies. Litter grabbers, trash bags.
Most approved.
Second.
Got a motion as second. Roll call, please.
May the second please, Craig.
Alexander.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's.
Thank you. At this time, item number two, which will be the discussion on ordinance number 02102-10, and Richard DePrist again.
Thank you, Councilman. This is a ordinance amending the Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 14, our solid waste in its entirety. If y'all remember, a couple of months ago, my predecessor Zach brought this to y'all to discuss. There was some discussion. But not knowing what the Resource Authority was going to do with tipping fees, y'all had asked to postpone it. The mayor had asked me to put it back on for this week. As far as the, the whole Chapter 14, basically, it's just an overall reorganization of the entire chapter. There's some items that have been removed that are no longer. Useful in 2021, that were written a long time ago. A lot of things just cleared up, made it more user-friendly, be able to understand a lot better. The biggest thing is, the discussion need to have is about, right now, our brush pickup is funded through the Environmental Service user fee, which is $12 a can per month. We do know for sure that the Resource Authority is going to be increasing their tipping fee rate. Not 100% sure on what that is yet. But we have proposed a 15% increase to be safe. What I'm recommending is to, which would help out with the brush, it would help, the tipping fees are going to go up substantially, I'm pretty sure, talking to Larry over at the Resource Authority. What I'm proposing is to increase that fee from $12 to $16 a can per month. With that. It would for sure cover our tipping fee increase, but it would also allow us to hire another operator to better serve the brush. I know y'all have been getting a lot of calls on that lately. We have been here as well. We're running anywhere four to six weeks behind. Of course, this is our busiest time, but as one of the councilmen said earlier, we haven't had a storm. It's just, at this time of the year, it's always busy. So I'd like to see what y'all's thoughts are, any questions or anything I can answer, feel free to ask.
And what about that $150 fee for non? I don't, I forgot what you call it for the.
Yes, that is a, so what that is, right now, the only people to get brush pickup are customers, trash customers. People that do not have our, utilize our. Trash service. Right now, it's set up to where they can pay $75 for a load to get picked up. The $75 does not, it really doesn't even cover our. Our salary for the employee and the brush pickup, the truck itself, so we raised it to $150, wanted to raise it to $150 to at least cover our expenses.
Richard, what do we, is it 44 or 46? What do we pay right now?
44.
44, yeah.
Yes.
And it's, it's probably realistically going to go to probably close to 50. Is probably what realistically it's going to go to.
Okay. So that's, that's close to around 13%.
Yeah.
Increase.
Yeah, I mean, by the time, you know, like I said, our trash has doubled over the past 10 years, you know, going to the Resource Authority, so.
Right. And it is.
We sure don't want to cut our brush off.
Do what?
I said, we sure don't want to cut our brush off. I remember when the county down the way with their brush pickup, I mean, people went crazy, so we sure don't want to cut our brush pickup off.
No, and you know, and that, and that's the thing Hendersonville's struggling with right now, too. I mean, it's, it's a big issue. I mean, trash pickup becoming a big issue, and it's going to be over the years, too, you know.
And we're probably cheaper than anybody around us.
We are, we are for sure there. Portland's $18 a month. Hendersonville's, there's, the way there's funded is a lot different, but we are the cheapest around. Of course, we do have a shorter haul to the resource. But, I mean, the, just inflation with everything else, trucks, the cost of trucks, the cost of equipment, personnel, with, with the cost of, with their performance increases, if there's a cost.
Are you motion?
No, I think, I think there's two people who want to speak on there.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Ms. Ms. Hime?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody look at section 14-9. There are some blanks that are there. So I would recommend that you go ahead and discuss tonight what you want to do with those, if we're going to have either one of those. There's a blank on D for a brush, brush collection fee and a recycling fee, and if those are going to be taken out, then we'll just take those out of that section and you can move forward. I just want a clarification on what we want to do with that section on those two blanks. Richard's already proposed $16 in A and $150 in C.
Mayor Bram?
Um, I, I think right now it's appropriate to kind of hold on the brush collection and recycling fee. I don't see us really moving, I don't think we really know what we want to do with that at this point. One thing I do think we should consider is the bulk pickup. If we can do a bulk pickup fee, because. Just looking around my neighborhood, I see the same houses using it frequently and most houses using it never. So I'd just be interested in your feedback on that thought. That was something, Richard, I didn't mention to you, and we have spoken about this, but I think everything else is appropriate, unfortunately, and. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Mayor, mayor, if I.
Hold on, Jimmy, Steve's got his hand up first.
My question is, do we have any figures on how much revenue this is going to bring in and how much we anticipate the tipping fees are going to be?
Yes, the, the additional $4 per can per month would be, be close to three quarters of what we made, like 700, approximately $768,000 for the year. Which, that's of course going to help. Um, if it's a, if Councilman Hayes is correct on $50 for tipping fees, we're looking at a, just $100,000 increase, if not a little more, just in tipping fees alone. Just from our projected growth and what we've been doing the last few years. But that extra, like I said, that extra revenue would allow us to hire another person to help with the brush. Right now, we've got four days a week, we've got six trash trucks on the road. Two days a week, we've got seven trash trucks on the road. We're looking at, by the end of, end of this year, probably having seven trucks on the road every day. Of course, so that extra revenue is actually going to be needed to replace trucks down the road. I mean, if we, if we're just getting one truck a year, I mean, that's replacing them every seven years. And that's just trash alone, and I mean, with the inflation with everything, from tires to gas, the fuel repairs, everything's going up. So that, that's, that's my, that's the reason I'm recommending the $16.
Would it be possible to do this on a sliding scale as we need it?
I think that becomes a bit of an accounting challenge with our billing department and everything, and, I mean, I, I think the need is there, it's demonstrated. I mean, the brush truck costs how much, Richard?
A brush truck, a new, a new brush truck's right at 160,000.
And then we're adding the people, the increased tipping fees. We have to do something with enforcing our recycling. You know, I've met with the. Well, with representatives from the Resource Authority and with the board last week, and I've told them all that I really think that Gallatin is going to have to lock down our facility. And just be serving Gallatin residents, because we're having so many people using that facility, and we're covering all the costs associated with it, so I think that we're going to need personnel there. And in general, it will support that department with some things that we need to do. They're having real challenges hiring people.
Do we have a total cost for, to what it costs to operate a truck, including personnel?
What was the question again?
What would be approximately the total cost to staff a truck? And the maintenance, fuel, what, anything, any cost associated with it? Do you have an annual cost on it?
I, I do not at this point. That is something I can get for you, though.
Yeah, we could probably break it out. He's got people doing multiple tasks and using multiple vehicles, so he'd have to really work on that for an example of what that might be.
How many people are we shorthanded in that department? The Environmental Services Department is actually fully staffed. But. If there's, if we have one person on vacation and another person call out sick, then we're having to pull from the brush to fill in for the trash, because trash is obviously number one. So it's, if, if everybody's here, everything functions like it should, but there's, it's, it's very, very rare with vacation and sick time and other things come up that everybody's here all week long, every week. Also, with like Mayor was saying about recycling, we're having, we're, we're at least two to three trips a day to Nashville, just hauling off plastic or excess cardboard that we can't get bailed because the bins are overflowing or glass. I mean, it's at least three trips a day to Nashville, and sometimes we're having to pull from sanitation, we're pulling from sanitation and street department to do that.
Richard.
How long, John? Jimmy, Jimmy's got his hand up, had it for a while. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Mayor, I just want to, okay, did you say you're good with the $16 and the 150? Is that what you said?
Um, I think it's, I think it's where we are at this point. I really do. I don't want to do it, but it's just, it's the cost of, you know, it's the cost that's gone up on us and.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that was blank with the $16 and the 150.
Let me ask a question before we vote on that.
Sure.
Let's get a second. Let's get a second. We're going to get a second.
I second.
Okay, all right, now then, John, you got a question?
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, Richard, do we give any consideration to senior citizens, because you, you talking about, I mean, $4 is not a lot to. Normal people, but senior citizens, to someone of fixed income, that could be pretty expensive.
It's not something that we have, have discussed. I mean, it's definitely something we could look into. It really, something would have to be set up to where, what is considered fixed income and what's not.
Well, I mean, not, not so much a fixed income, I guess, as, as for a senior citizen.
So at a cer- a certain age, maybe at a lower rate.
Right.
I, I would suggest kind of going the route of the tax freeze people, if you want to do something like that. I mean, I do think it's important to recognize that we're still lower than surrounding cities and we're a lot lower than private haulers, and people do have the option to, you know, not use us if they, you know, desire to seek a different option. But, you know, we have that tax freeze program, Councilman Alexander, where people who are of a certain age and a certain income. You know, I, I don't see the point in doing it across the board for all seniors, but, you know, certainly those in need, I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, that, that'd be my concern about, you know, senior citizens, just someone fixed income, probably struggling as it is, just.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a question. Do we have an approximate cost or savings if we eliminate the other people using our services?
Approximately, call see if we eliminated what now?
Okay, the mayor said that we may have to have other, stop other people from using the service. Do we have a call, do we have an estimate on what it's costing now for them to use it?
We don't know, because we're not monitoring it, to know who's using it. We just know the use has come up substantially. But we also hear, and this is entirely anecdotally, that, you know, people from Hendersonville say, oh, I take my stuff to the Gallatin recycling and, and, you know, they, and just watching it on social media. That the community, the whole, you know, county and surrounding counties think that this is, you know, a free-for-all where they can take their recycling. And especially if they're on the way to the Resource Authority, they don't have a utility by which people can dispose of recycling and trash at the same time without going through twice. And so it's really convenient to stop by the recycling center and then go to the Resource Authority. So that's, that's why I think we need to look at that, but we don't know at this point, because we're not monitoring it.
And one other question, and I'll be finished. If, if this were to pass with $16 a can, would the residents have a, a right to, if they decide that they don't want us to pick, pick it up anymore, that they can get a private. Hollow to pick it up on?
Yeah, or they can take it to the Resource Authority themselves, yeah.
So it wouldn't be automatic on your utility bill?
Correct. You got a choice. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they will have to stop their service if they're currently getting this.
Yeah, but you could stop your service, yeah.
Otherwise, it would be automatic, because we wouldn't have a way to know they didn't want service any longer.
Okay, that's what I know, because the can belongs to the resident, right? Like the city.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
So are we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Linda.
Are we voting just on the $16 and $150 increase, or are we adding in this elderly and lower income part to that tonight?
Just voting on the 16 and the 150.
I, I would note that there are other changes that have been made. Your, it, it's the entire chapter that you are revising. Those are the two major changes.
Right.
Accurate, Richard?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, and does someone need to amend that? Well, and does someone need to amend that at this point to remove that? Was it E and F from?
Well, we don't really have to amend it, but if we're not going to, I mean, I just need to know, and Richard needs to know, if we're going to take that out, we can take that out before you have your first reading.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that the A and C you're talking about?
A and C, I think you've agreed on. It's the D and E.
D and E, yeah.
The, it's, that's the brush, brush collection fee and the recycling fee, which I don't think that you're really ready to consider at this point.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I's and zero N's.
Thank you, Connie. All right, item number three, resolutions, R two, one, zero, four, dash, three, three, and R two, one, zero, four, dash, three, four. Mr. Finn?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, uh, asking that you reappoint, uh, these two members to my board.
Most approve.
Second.
If a motion is second, any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's.
Thank you. Item number four, resolution number R two, one, zero, five, dash, three, seven. Uh, Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hayes. So this is a resolution reclassifying an employee whose membership was almost three years. It started out as a temp, he went to a temporary leave, and then we'd like to move this employee to a permanent part-time.
Stewart, that salary, uh, will the salary be the same or will there be an increase when it considers a promotion?
It, it's an increase, uh, Mr. Alexander. The no funds are needed this year for it, uh, and we'd ask for it in next year's budget, uh, he, uh, will, uh, be eligible for benefits as a, uh, permanent part-time. He's a college student.
We have a motion?
Let me ask one more question. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. So Mr. right now, you, the, the part-time person is working what, four hours or five hours? Or if you're working full-time and just not, that's it?
Working about three days a week right now, and, uh, class loads have, uh, decreased and, uh, this would bring him in for thirty-two hours a week or four days.
There's something that we need now. Can't wait for budget next year.
Well, we've asked for him in the budget and we did, did not need any funds to do this with, but funds were in place.
And this is driven by need. Um, as you know, that department is, um, I'm chasing it every day, knocking. What's your average inspections per day right now, Mr. Stewart?
Running about a hundred and fifty a day right now.
And they're really trying to keep up with the development community and serve them well. And it's just become a challenge with the number of people who are available, um, and the number of jobs that needed to be done. And Chuck Stewart all along has always been in sync with me about, you know, we keep ramping up this department, but there's going to come a time when we have to then start letting people go, um, when this slows down. He thinks that that will happen through, um, you know, retirement and, and the like, but, um, but he's well aware that there could come a time that, you know, this building can stop, there could be major recession or depression, and all of a sudden they have no work in that department.
Most approve.
So the motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George? Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's.
Thank you. At this time, any other business from anybody on the council?
I have one, Craig. I'd ask Ms. McCauley to look at our short-term, less than thirty-day rentals that we have in a city galton like Airbnbs and that kind of stuff, not just that, but any of them, any of our short-term rentals. Uh, now's the time we need to look at it. Um, having some discussions with Ms. McCauley. I don't think we're getting any of our hotel motel taxes or anything on the current ones that we have. But I've asked her to look at this, and I'd like for any council people to have any conversations with Ms. McCauley, if you will. But now's the time that we better put something in place to protect us and protect our citizens and our residents here. Uh, and it's just something we can look at. There's so many options. Ms. McCauley, please speak up and talk about it, but there's so many options we could do, but now's the time we need to address it.
Well, there is a, a Short Term Rental Unit Act that was passed by the legislature. And I've heard that there might be a bill, uh, that might amend some of this or, or could, and in this term, there are certain things that we can do, certain things we can't do if there are, if you're wanting to prohibit it in any way. If there's anyone who fits the definition of being grandfathered in, we would have to grandfather those people in. There are a number of different options, but I need to hear from council on what you want to do, what you don't want to do. Uh, council member, we had talked about possibly limiting them to the commercial district, but when I went back and looked at the act, this only applies to residential. This act does, so I don't think that that, uh, possibility is there to limit it to just commercial. But there are other things that we can do. So I just need to know from council what your thoughts are, and we're going to have to do some, some more research into this. Uh, I did get a contact possibly for someone at Department of Revenue today that we can contact to let them know we're not getting our hotel motel tax, things that are rented on Airbnb and VRBO. Those entities are supposed to be paying the lodging tax. Evidently something was sent to cities last year. I didn't see it. I don't know if anyone here actually received it. Uh, it was supposed to be sent to let them know if we have a lodging tax. So we need to contact the Department of Revenue, let them know that we do, so we can start collecting that tax at a minimum.
Guys, where this come from? I've had a resident call me that somebody bought a house out on the lake and some folks from another state has bought this house. Uh, and it's actually in Councilman Hayes's district. And they're going to, uh, rent this as Airbnb and the residents around it are really, really concerned uh, that they're going to have, you know, whatever parties are doing, Airbnb's on short-term rentals. So that's where it come from. And I just called Ms. McCauley. I just think we need to address it before it does get out of hand.
I, I did at our department head meeting today, asked other department heads if they've had any concerns, and so far hadn't heard of anything. I know Chief Bandi was going to check uh, records. That'll probably take a little while to figure out, but to his knowledge, we hadn't had any complaints thus far. If you go out and look on VRBO and Airbnb, if you look at Galton, it looks like there are a lot of, of rentals currently, but most of those have determined are actually in the county, but there are probably fifteen or so, I think, that are in the city. Um, that are rented on a sporadic basis.
Is that the one, is that the one, Jimmy, Lake Park?
Oh, Brad Jolly.
I think that's right. Yes, Craig.
Off of Lot Four?
No, 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 no. This one's off of Brown's Lane in, in the Lake.
There's one, there's also one over there, Lake Park off of Lot Four too.
Yeah, they do that. They, they've had that one for a long time over there.
If you didn't hear me, it's Bob Brad Jolly.
Yeah.
It's Bob Brad Jolly.
I've seen one on Lakeshore and where I saw several some time ago, although I didn't find them today when I was looking, was at the Galton Marina.
Yeah.
Didn't Hendersville just put something in place to deal with this?
Hendersville does have an ordinance, yes.
Okay, well, that's something we need to look at then. So, okay.
Well, y'all will just, you know, call me and kind of let me know your thoughts, so you can direct and guide me on where I should do my research, what your thing.
With the amount of people that are coming in and buying, uh, uh, properties, uh, there's probably going to be a lot more of this coming down the pike.
I know, and that's why I thought we better get ahead of it right now.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all get with, y'all get with Ms. McCauley.
So we need to put it on a work session next time, or you want to wait for that, or you got us how you want us to handle it? You want to put it on a work session or you need more time than that?
I think she wants everybody to just give her some ideas.
Yeah, I think it'd be basically, we give some feedback first and then if we need to have a, a meeting, we, we can do that.
Did I understand we're not getting any revenue off of them right now?
Correct.
Well, maybe somebody needs to find out what the other towns are doing.
I deal with that on a daily basis, uh. I guess I could ask them, I guess, check and see what their policy is. I know that, uh, VRBO collects part of the taxes, and then the property owner is responsible for part of it. It gets a little complicated, so you got to be real careful what, what we do, or we're going to be, it could be an accounting nightmare.
But states do allow different, those states have different rules too. And I know that Florida had a real active lobby um, with their short-term rental stuff, and they've tried in Tennessee, but I don't think they've been as successful.
I, I know that a couple of years ago, Clarksville was looking at prohibiting them there. They spent, I think, a couple of years researching it, and they ended up dropping it because they did, um, have a lot of reaction from the short-term rental market and from some of their citizens who thought they were taking away their property rights. Other cities have, have done various other things. So there are things that we can do. I just need to know what direction you want me to go, and I, I'm going to work with, um, Ms. Nichols, so we can top, contact Department of Revenue to make sure that we do start getting those lodging taxes on the ones that are currently up and running.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any other business? Any other council person? How about department heads?
I have some things.
The mayor has.
Yeah, I see you. I see you.
You didn't like the department heads. Go ahead. Just don't forget me.
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Um, a couple of things. First of all, uh, Mr. Henshaw emailed you guys this morning about a mural that's seeking approval. It has gone through the Arts Council. It has the endorsement and support of the Arts Council. This is for new business happening on Main Street. It's called Big Tre- is it Big Trouble? Yeah, Big Trouble Brewery. And this is the mural that they have proposed for the side of their building. Um, you know, we've done what we're supposed to do. We've determined it's not a sign. It is, um, community art. Like I said, the Arts Council says they like it, and so it's up to this council to, um, move it on to vote on it and approve it. Is that right, Ms. McCauley? Is that how we've done it before? Okay.
Is this what used to be Galton Flower and?
Yes, yes.
Will the building stay that same color?
Oh, I like it. I, I don't know. I mean, we looked at the, we look at the mural, so I don't, I don't know what you do in the building. And remember, background on this is that, um, because of content and subjectivity, that we decided to charge the Arts Council with making the determination whether or not it was art that, um, contributed to the character of our city in some way and, or, or, um, you know, that that was kind of determination, so that we would not be in the business of judging artwork.
Nice, I like it.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion sent up.
They had a motion, they're second?
Second.
Okay.
I would say that if it was up more towards the square, that I wouldn't think it would fit in with the historic part, but where it is, I guess, is all right.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's.
Great, thank you. Any other department heads?
I have two other things. Next thing is, I just want to make you all aware that at this point, I am hoping to have the budget ready to present to you all at the council meeting next week. Um, typically I do it in a work session, but I want to get to you as soon as I can. So if it's done, I'm going to do it at next Tuesday's um, council meeting. And then finally, I just want to ask this council again about how we are doing the meetings once we are back in person, which is next meeting. So, um, you know, I, I think, um, you know, Dr. Saunders made the point and, um, you know, I think it's the service that we provided to the citizens, and then we have gotten good engagement and bad engagement, but a lot of good engagement and a lot of good awareness that I really, you know, hate to cut people off who may still be sensitive to, um, ex, you know, sensitive about exposure to COVID, and also, um, you know, for convenience sake. So I want to again ask this council if they would reconsider your plans to move forward withholding the meetings. I think at this point, you all have said that you don't want it on Facebook, you don't want it on Zoom, and you only want the council meetings on the website and television. Am I correct in this?
Correct, dude.
If it's on Zoom, we're, are, and we're in person, will we still be interacting through Zoom while we're in person?
You wouldn't have individual computers. There would be, you know, one camera for the council and then an option for people to participate by phone or, or video if they wanted to via the Zoom platform.
Any other discussion?
My only comment is, um, when people are seeing us, uh, that are, that we don't see them, they think we're not paying attention. And if we have people in front of us, we are paying attention. And I would like to eliminate that as being, uh, an option, or that would be a, uh, a way for them to misinterpret how we're interacting with them. So I would rather us have people there.
That's where it's always been.
Yeah.
And on TV.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm assuming we're going to leave it like it is, right? Thank you. Anything else, Mayor?
Um, that is it.
All right, Chuck Stewart.
Immediately, Chuck.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, this may, uh, involve Bill McCord in this discussion that, uh, I think there's something we're going to have to take a look at now. Uh, zoning ordinance is violations. Uh, the building code violations, we're, we're not having any issues. Uh, we have a little more power. Uh, we can turn their power off. Uh, if they decide they want to work on Sundays, we'll send Chief Bande's, uh, officers out and write them, write them a ticket and send them to court. Uh, but we've got a lot of zoning, uh, violations that's starting to happen around the city, and we're starting to run into them with junk cars, uh, placing things in places they should not be. And I think that, uh, Bill and I are going to need a little guidance from you of how strict and how far we want to go with these, uh, issues. Uh, it's happening more and more on a daily basis as the city continues to grow. Trying to track all the food trucks that are parked in different locations and uh, the things we encounter on a daily basis. Uh, if they're building something without a permit, we'll catch them. And we don't have a problem with those. They, they pretty much fall in line pretty quick. But, uh, you can, uh, preach to them about these zoning violations. They'll build a, uh, a fence in their backyard and they should have a fence permit for it. Then the neighbor's going to call. We go out and they built the fence already. So we're looking for some kind of direction here, how, how much enforcement we want to do. And to be fair to Bill, he only has, uh, one person that goes out and runs the streets where I've got a armload of them that's driving all over the city.
Was it, Chuck, is it not something that y'all could come up with and bring, present to us, and then we could kind of fine tune it or whatever?
That's what, that's the kind of direction we're looking for. What you'd like for us to bring a presentation?
That's what I'd like for y'all to see. I mean, just, just come up with something and then bring it to us and then let us look at it. You know, we can kind of fine tune it or y'all, you know, how, how aggressive we want to be with it.
I agree with Craig, because y'all are going to know more about what the violations than we are.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, and, and it might be that we need somebody else to help out, you know, but, but that's what I think we need to do is y'all come up with something, some kind of plan to bring to us, to present to us and let us look at it. And, you know, kind of go over with us and say, okay, y'all want to, y'all want to be this strict, y'all want to be, you know?
Well, zoning violations have always been a, uh, a tough topic to deal with, no matter where you are. Now, Bill, you might want to step off in this. Now, Bill, you might want to step off in this.
Yeah, we seem to have some recurring problems and some by the same folks of placing banners and illegal signs either in the right of way or on their property. We're having some people, we're having temporary containers and things like that that are being set up on properties in violation of the zoning ordinance. Chuck had mentioned the fence issues. One problem that we have, and it's been persistent, is the difference between a vehicle that is towed and is licensed to vehicle and/or a vehicle awaiting repair versus one that is essentially junk that is sitting on a piece of property. Because obviously, we don't allow junk yards in the city, but yet there are many places in town where there are essentially junk cars that are occupying many repair lots and things of that sort. Haven't been moved in years, don't have a current license tag on them. That's kind of a gray area as to whether that's a zoning or property management aspect of enforcement. But we try to coordinate well with the police department in the codes enforcement as well as the zoning enforcement. Sometimes there's multiple violations on one property. But there's just a lot of, I don't know, I'll call it liberties that people are taking that are in violation of the city's zoning ordinance and perhaps other parts of the code that really getting out of hand. And once they get out of hand, they're very difficult to enforce, and other people will tell on other people about, well, we're not enforcing it against somebody else. So we want to get a good understanding. I think what we can do is probably present some ideas and show you some photographs of some violations that are occurring around town, so you're more familiar with what our code is and what those violations are and where they are. You're probably familiar with a lot of them.
That's, that's.
That could be a good start.
That's exactly what we want right there, yeah.
And if I may, if I may.
Miss Susan got her hand up.
Susan.
Muted.
You're muted, Susan.
James may be speaking on this issue. This issue. I have a different issue.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on this issue. This is one of the things that we have to face as a city because we're growing and we're changing, we're becoming something else. We're actually, you know, I think everyone agrees that we're improving. And there are those people that have been here forever, and they've always done it that way. And now it has to change. And I find that in the industrial sector. People that have said, hey, before I could just put up a building, and now I have to jump through all these hoops. We are, we are growing as a city, and you as a body really have some difficult, you know, decisions to make. Not necessarily difficult, but decisions to make that we just need to start making sure everyone's moving in the direction that you have decided we are going to move. And so those, there will be people that have always done it that way that can no longer do it that way. And I trust Chuck Stewart and I trust Bill McCord to move those, you know, issues forward in an appropriate manner. But we just have to make that decision right now, folks. We are changing. We are growing. We are progressing. And you just have to make sure that you support the decisions that are being made out there.
And I think, I think they can put something together and bring it to us. That'd be great. Does anybody agree?
Yes.
I do. When you start enforcing them, you know you're going to get a lot of phone calls, and that's, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll direct them to you, Jimmy.
No, we're going to direct them to you, James.
Susan, you got anything?
I do. Just very quickly, in the, and I'll try to do this as quick as I can. The last few weeks, we've been getting several questions about the department head recruitment process. I've tried to call each council member individually, but I know there is at least one of you I wasn't able to speak to. It's not really a legal issue, and we have the process to be followed, so it doesn't become a legal issue. Just as a little bit of background, the resolution adopting that process was adopted back in 2015. It was adopted unanimously by council. But I wanted to ask Ms. Flood, even though she wasn't here when that started, if she would just give a really brief overview so that we're not continuously fielding questions about what that process is, and so that if you have questions, you can, you can ask.
Okay, the process is, once human resources prescreens for minimum requirements, an expert panel will recommend a list of candidates for the interview, and then the panel will then recommend a candidate for the position.
Who are the experts? I've never really understood that.
That's determined by their field of expertise.
I'll chime in. Yeah, that's generally determined by the HR department, and they typically wait and kind of see who their applicants are. Once they screen out the ones who don't meet the qualifications, then they look and then, you know, say that we're hiring a public works director like we just did. We might get someone from MTAS, which is the Municipal Technical Advisory Service. We might get some surrounding cities' public works directors, as long as they don't have somebody from their employee base who's applying for that job, or someone even near them. We try and get people that may not have any conflicts with any of the, or any potential perceived conflicts with any of the candidates who may be, you know, considered for that position. And so she kind of waits and sees who the applicants are who make it through the initial screening, and then she will recruit, you know, people that are applicable to that field that they're hiring. So they're experts. They're outside of the city of Galton. Well, I shouldn't say they're always outside the city of Galton. I guess there could be a situation where someone, where an expert resided in Galton, but they don't have anything to do with our council, our employee base, the mayor. They are, they are people that HR independently identifies as experts and oftentimes seeks guidance from, you know, MTAS or other agencies that may be similar when we're looking for, you know, someone who may be an expert.
But there's nothing in that ordinance that says that we have to go by who that committee suggests. Correct?
I mean, as far as the hiring process.
Correct.
Hire. No, you vote on, I mean, like, you know, like Ms. Flood explained, you go through that process, and then from that group you pick, you do hire from that group typically.
Yeah, the panel recommends.
But you don't have to go, but we don't have to vote on who the panel recommends. That's what I'm saying. Correct?
Well, I certainly think it would be courteous to at least vote on whomever the panel recommends.
Or just our last, just our last pile, the panel recommended we voted for somebody else, and we didn't.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did.
No, I don't think so.
Or are you talking about Public Works?
Yes.
I think there was a tie in that situation between.
There was two of them, and one of them was one we hired.
Yeah, I think they recommended, well, I think they said that they had separate strong suits, but they considered them equal candidates. That was the last hour call hearing. But regardless, I mean, they, we depend, I think Ms. Flood's point is, is that we depend, once human resources determine that the candidates do or do not meet minimum requirements and are moved on to the committee, then the committee vets the ones who meet the requirements as to whether or not they would be good candidates to interview. I think, I think we've interviewed as many as six or seven, and we've interviewed as few as three. And we have to date hired based on the recommendation of the panel, but certainly, you know, you're going to know who that final field is.
Oh, so Susan, does that resolution override a charter? What does the charter say?
The charter just says that the council makes the council votes. I would have to go back and read the charter, but this is a policy that was put in place by council. And I think if you're not going to follow the policy, y'all would need to vote to repeal it or something of that effect.
Yeah, the wording is, the panel will, the wording is, the panel will recommend and forward for approval a list of candidates for interview. That's, that's, they decide.
And who is the panel?
That panel will be created.
And have we always made it, have we always made it that we put all of our internal candidates in that group of field? I think the last three or four that we've hired, we've always put our internal candidates in that group that we've interviewed. Have we not?
The internal candidates.
No, we had done it all the time.
Is that the presence that we set?
No.
I think you need to look back and look at that and see.
No, we've had some candidates that did not meet the qualifications, even in this last hire, I believe internally, and.
All right. Anybody have anything else?
Nothing else.
Any other department heads?
I have one real quick thing. Last night, the planning commission approved the master development plan, final master development plan for the vintage at Baker's Crossing, the apartment complex. And as part of that master plan, there's eight acres of land between the railroad tracks and Highway 31, Nashville Pike, on the east side of East Camp Creek, which will eventually be conveyed to the city for a park and Greenway extension. So I just want to let you know that that's moving forward.
We talked about that last week, I think.
We've already agreed that we wanted that, because we asked Mr. Brown, was it valuable for him? He said yes, so.
Okay.
Hey, Craig, let me ask, Richard probably works one quick question, please.
All right.
Richard, where do we stand on Gray Street? I know at one time we was working diligence on that street, but it seemed like now we just stopped.
The, so the work that Public Works did, we are complete with the road widening. All we're waiting on is Rogers Group, the paving contractor, to top that out. There is a section of curb that we got to replace, but they should be paving it within the next couple of weeks according to the schedule from engineering.
Got you. All right. Thanks, Richard. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right. If that's it, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Everybody have a good night.
You've done a good job. Craig, we might keep you. Mike, don't get happy. Don't get happy. I said, Mike.
Let's keep him for May.